Unless they were trying to eat you. Be that close to it.
Hi Klaus.
The cow.
I'm ahead of the hour now.
Apologies. I guess that was important.
We got enough for a forum, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First, have we first pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clayton Ball absent. Mr. Behrens?
Present.
Steve Christensen absent. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Linda Lautner absent. Mr. Noonan?
Here.
Mr. Popa absent. Mr. Travis?
Here.
Mr. Wessel?
Here.
And Mr. Yeomans?
Here.
Six.
Four.
Are there any agenda additions or deletions? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The agenda. Public comment? Alright, on the business of the day, the five-year plan discussion. Oh sure.
Sorry.
TV.
Yeah.
It was a good one.
You have, they have an agenda Dallas, it looks like.
Yep.
So I'll just supplement that with. The only thing that really changed on this timeline, and I told Dallas we're gonna look at the timeline every time because the time keeps getting smaller and smaller. For the day we need to have it ready, right? But what we did do, and Laurel and I worked through some dates based on our last, um, our last meeting. And, um, if you look down at line, uh, eleven and twelve below page two there, um, we're already looking at, um, this meeting today, and then we've got one projected for the sixteenth of, um, of October. And then immediately following that, we've talked about this window, um, in October for a public, thirty-day public comment period. So after the meeting on the sixteenth, we will, um, we will post, well, we're actually going to be posting right around that time, and then thirty-day public comment officially.
Do you have to have board approval to post that?
Um, don't know.
Just so you know, we have an accelerated timeline for the October sessions. So if you want the board to consider that, we've gotta get it on the agenda for the first of October.
And all we're talking about is posting that, that we're gonna put up a draft plan, right? They don't need the draft plan, they just need to know that we're going to post a thirty-day public comment period for public comments.
Right. And I think past practice, it's had to go before the board to acknowledge and approve that. So we can double-check with Chad.
Okay. So interject into there a little bit of a county commissioner approval to go to public comment period. And then for thirty days between the middle of October and middle of November, the plan, the draft plan will be made available on the website. Um, we are, we are using, as you know, a SharePoint, if you're going on the SharePoint thing, you can see the information. So today, we're gonna go through a draft. Once this draft is worked through, we'll put up the red marks of it, and we'll put up our edits to it. So we're actually just gonna physically write and draw, write and scribble on it. We'll put that up on record, but then really translate that into the next meeting, which will put all the components up on to the SharePoint, um, site. Um, and then, then at some point after, what date is the board commissioner meeting then, that will approve them?
Their executive board that they deliberate is the first of October. The regular session where they approve their recommendations is the eighth.
So ten-one, we need something to you by, like, just the notice that's gonna go in by the end of the month then to go into the ten-one packet. And then the board will give authorization to put off a public comment on the eighth. And then, we need to actually, to make it work, I think Laurel and I talked about putting out the public comment, um, notice to paper to get it timing right. So that we can hit the thirty days, optimal thirty-day window. Um, and the reason, the reason we're doing that is you have to do this public comment period before you can actually take public, do a public open house. It's just a sequence that they require. For, to me, it doesn't make it particularly a lot of sense. But that's what they ask, that they require us to do. Um, once that's happened, the real, so that, so, public comment, let's stop there for, let's go back to that. Public comment can come in in multiple ways. What we're suggesting is that we could make a simple, fillable form, like a Survey Monkey form that has a short amount of questions on it. Um, and really more leave it available for people to add comment, okay, to it. So it's a vessel, the, or vehicle to get, if they want, to provide any data about themselves, but really more so answer a few questions, this is, you know, that little coin, and then really comment on the document. So they can have a way of, you know, page seven, this, I don't like that. Page eight, could you add this, whatever they're gonna say. So we'll make that mechanism, and during that public comment period, we'll have it available. So I'm not sure if we'll use this, but Survey Monkey is gonna be a separate link that we have left people go to. Or if we, well, it would be, and then also we'll have a physical hard copy that can go on to the website. Land or be available. Is there any place that people pick stuff up in the county? With extensional, I mean, is there a place there they could do a draft document and go, oh, I wanna take a hard copy of a survey? Would that happen in, how would it happen in your office?
We can have something similar to, for what we do with the budget.
Okay.
Where it's available for review, but generally more people, I think, look at it online.
Online. And you do that out of your office when there's a budget available for review?
The budget is with the clerk, but we could certainly keep it at my county.
Whichever you prefer, I just don't wanna bombard, you know, like, coming into your space if you don't normally have that happen. So maybe you can tell them when the clerk's office, I don't know. But, you know what I mean? So whichever you prefer. But I think having a physical copy of that, and then having, having it online through Survey Monkey will, will give up, give people the chance to, um, make any comment in that period. Um, it also just means they can save up their questions when it comes to a public hearing. So the notice we'll put out will talk about both the public comment session, or the public, um, comment period, and then this public input session that we're going to have. And then following that, there's an adoption at a public hearing. In December. That would be the last item on there in December fifth. So, the last of, I'm sorry, item fifteen, December fifth would be the last December board meeting. Which we would try to have the resolution to submit the plan to the DNR past. So I'm assuming Laurel, again, we have, we have the head of that for the executive meeting? So that would be a week before the...
It's the second Tuesday.
I was gonna say. You, you won't have to, you won't have to worry about the schedule too much, but I just, I wanted to do this. So the week before is the, the, uh, the last week of November. For the executive board.
Yeah.
And then the fifth is when we have a resolution.
Just here.
Passed after public hearing. Okay. So all that mishmash boils down to the fact we still have to work on some stuff. And what you have next is the first version of the plan, um, sections. Short of what we call the action program section, we have a lot more pictures of inventory maps that are gonna go in, what we haven't put in yet. So we brought them physically here to look at. And we're gonna focus on section five. Is that right? Five. Which is the priorities, goals, and objectives section. Um, yeah, do you want extra copies for, for folks?
Sure.
So this is gonna be just a, so I'll walk through this, and then we'll skip, we'll get back to, we'll get back to business on section, um, section five. This is front and back for saving paper, by the way. Section five starts on page forty. And that's really where, we're gonna go point by point through this, but let me walk you through what we have. So, basically, um, a couple of questions. I think everything's in order in terms of the folks that are listed here and your current governmental structure. Um, our, unless something different on the mission statement? This was coined in two thousand and two. Are you aware of anything different that you guys produced for mission statement for Park and Rec? On page three there? Okay. And you can read this later on. Section from page, from page three through the inventory, which goes all the way to page eleven. That's just data about the county. What's missing in that section are two things that we wanna, we're updating. Um, if you look at page, uh, if you look at page, uh, ten and eleven, these two maps are out of date. What we're do, we're gonna update the heritage trail primarily on these two maps. Which is now, the mapping court doesn't correlate with the key. So now we know most of the route, and what's not done, and what is done. Does any, by the way, does anyone sit, or do you know of anyone that sits on the committee that's, that's spearheading the next step of work? With the heritage trail from the county?
Does Lois Bailey sit on that? She's on the chair, I think.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, there's that group of people representing all the townships, and then the park service and park, et cetera. So anyway, we'll, we'll be updating primarily map, the map on page ten isn't correct. And then, not in here at all is this map. And last time we were out, um, we caught a couple of new things that are gonna go on it. And we haven't decided whether we're gonna rebuild this map. It's kind of, it's pixelated when I enlarge it like this, but I think it's okay, small. It's just, it's a little bit difficult to edit. So we may build something a little simpler. But this basically is all recreational opportunities on any jurisdictional governmental unit that are identified, and it correlates to a section called inventory in the back, where there's this table. So we updated that, but we haven't updated the map. It'll go, I believe, in, at the end of this section. And it might also, or it might go as a front of the inventory section.
Can we redo that one, or any of them? Could you, could you get South Manitou and one of them?
Right, good point.
It's not, it's cut off, and I agree.
I think we talked about that last time. We were talking about the fox islands.
Oh, that would be, yeah.
So we might have to do an insert, you know, and do something with it. It's just, uh, this scale, I think they're trying to make the map as good as we could. But what we might do is an insert that shows the Manitou's reduced scale, and the box's reduced scale, or whatever. And, uh, add it to the map, and reference their jurisdictions. So, the county, does the county have, park services, both the Manitou's?
Yep.
And then, does the county have foxes, most foxes?
Both.
Both foxes?
Both foxes are in the county. One's mostly state land, one's got a very, I think just the lighthouse portion is state land.
Okay, but there's no land owned by the county on, on foxes?
I don't believe that.
But it's, it's in the jurisdiction.
Technically, technically in the jurisdiction of the county. Okay. So we will do that and update it, and you know, the more I think about it, it's probably gonna end up actually right before the inventory section. Um, which is section three, right here. But what I'd like to do is have that be available for the general orientation of all the properties that we're gonna talk about next in that section. So after administrative structure, page thirteen, so right in there, the plan I'm seeing this map. Probably more as a lead into the sites. Alright. Now, we have a lot of photographs and more data to be putting into the inventory here, which is in draft right now, and you'll see it in better form. But, you had a question, Ty?
This, this group a year or so ago, uh, passed a resolution to request the road commission to build a bike trail. And we're doing that as we speak today. So, when you do the bike routes here, just make sure that out to the, out to the state parks, we have a bike trail.
And that's gonna be a share, share, a shared route on the road, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and we should probably add, we'll probably add that, you know, mine on this map, but on the inventory here with, uh, that we're doing updates for the heritage trail. So that goes from basically from...
Norwood.
Okay.
I mean, it, it went to Norwood, Cherry Holmes, and now it goes to Reston Road.
Okay. But, so some, so, just north of Sutton's Bank?
No, north of, uh, north of, uh, Northport.
So what's in between Sutton's Bank?
Sutton's Bank.
Nothing.
It's just a small, long road.
Okay. So Norwood to Northport.
Norwood, Cherry Holmes.
Cherry Holmes.
Cherry Holmes connecting one of the state parks to the other.
Okay. Got it, okay. Is there, um, is that on any other official map, like, that the county's done, or that the county commissioners were done?
No, because they're just doing it just like...
Who's doing it, okay. Um, okay, yeah, we can add that in. Um, so, like I said, the inventory here, we, we spent, you know, the three different site visits with you all, translated some of the, um, most readily observable information onto base maps that looked like, they, we used the existing map, um, of your concept plan, and we got this enlarged as well. But we wanted to show all of Miles Kimberly. That's, and what we'll do is, we talked about Miles Kimberly, uh, first in the inventory section, so as we go into the goals and objectives, we'll keep that sequencing the same way. So Miles Kimberly, not that there's any priority necessarily, but that's, that's what we're doing. And then Old Settlers, and then Veronica Valley. So as you look at this, some of this information, we're putting in new aerials that show the, the physical boundary. Um, we're trying to incorporate the whole, the whole parcel in this case, and we added the golf, the disc golf course and the trails that go back in. So if there's something that Scott can look at that needs to be modified within any of that part, we'll ask him. And then in the front of the property, um, you don't have this in front of you. Um, we did put it up on the, uh, we're gonna put it up on the SharePoint site. We basically, from our inventory, went through and, uh, put a list of additional components or different components, alpha-numeratively, onto the map for considerations in a planning process. We don't have a plan. We have an old plan, and we have some ideas. And these ideas of the old plan need to turn into a plan at some point. So you're gonna see in the goals and objectives section, one of those things is to draw, update the plan, and then, and then figure out cost points for some of the things you may or may not want to do. That's not probably gonna happen within the context of the rec plan. We need to focus on the rec plan getting done. But, you know, certainly it can happen pretty close concert to it, and that, that's where I would recommend, whenever that happens, next year or following year, you update Miles Kimberly's plan, you do an amendment, and you just slip that new map into this, into the plan. Unless you said, let's, let's cause more of a trainer, I could try and get the plan figured out now. I would recommend you don't try to do that in the next couple of months. That's too much to do. That isn't to say you can't get public comment on some things. And so what we're trying to do is be idea generating, not, not physically show how things are gonna change on the park. But, the struggle is that the old plan is very different than probably what will ultimately happen. So, it's a, it's a little tough, it's a tough property to work on because of the, the complexity. The, but when we get into the, uh, goals and objectives here, we have some questions on that. And I'll leave it at that for inventory for Miles Kimberly. I wanted to go back one second, though, just double-check something. On the administrative structure, our question relates to, does Scott report directly to the board? Or does Scott work directly under this committee? In terms of the staff chart that you see, that Casey has, that's on page, uh...
Isn't he technically part of grounds and maintenance of the whole county?
He's, he's for the whole county, so he'd be parks and rec separate. Now, is that diagrammed appropriately? I don't know. He reports to you, so there shouldn't be an arrow to you, right?
On behalf of the maintenance director.
Right. So who's the maintenance director?
Jerry Coleman.
Okay, so we need to add the layer of books dot, and then Scott does come to these meetings regularly. So what we might do is on that chart, add a vector, a line connecting him to your parks and rec committee generally. Just so that, it's kind of generally showing how communication happens, and how decisions are made. So, I'll get it on page twelve at that.
Do you usually put the, the name of the individual, or we might choose?
We could just put the title. I, we did that just so we kind of remember. Scott's the guy there, but we could just put, um, if it's gonna go out of date. We could do that, that's a good point.
Yep.
So above, we just put, did you call him maintenance director?
He's maintenance staff, or maintenance worker.
Maintenance worker, and then above him is maintenance director?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I didn't wanna insult Scott by not having his name there, but he's not here, so we can assault him, right? No, and the maintenance director at one spot.
Is Gerald Coleman the second?
Okay, thanks. I, I wanted to catch that before we missed it. Alright, so then back to inventory. After Miles Kimberly, we went, and as you know, who else is sitting on it? But we went and looked at, with Casey, this property. This is the base map we're using. We're using the existing rendering, almost as a topographic existing conditions map. Because most of what's on that map is really what's there. You know, there's a few things that aren't, but I think most of it's pretty much what's there. So, um, little bit of the inventory, uh, description of the place. We have to do what's called, on all of these, a accessibility assessment, and rate the sites for accessibility. So that's, this one came up, Miles Kimberly will come up. Um, you know, we have to decide how we, how we feel about the current, um, compliance to ADA, and/or does it, is there any place that we go beyond ADA and do any universal stuff? Universal access is a level higher, it's, it's termed that way because the DNR's incentivizing it through grant making. You can do certain things that get you more value for your grants by doing universally accessible. But here, we, most of the things we noted were either slight safety modifications or ADA things, and a few, um, physical planning changes that could help, like, organize your parking a little bit better, or do some things that, or signage that help people circulate better. So this plan takes your plan, you don't have it yet, you'll see it. And we've added some notes, and some general bubbles, there's a few more to go on here, that are the basis, again, of the goals and objectives section, the words that correlate to this plan. And again, probably one of the goals and objectives is to update this plan. Um, get it a little bit more on one level of, uh, uh, you know, maybe get a new, get a topographic map taken at some point, and get the prop, the property, um, uh, it doesn't have to. This one, I feel like, man, it's so close, there's a few little things. Last time we were here, we had some ladies come in and talk about wanting to scall or do their, do their, uh, rowing out of the lake, and is it possible to implement some storage of something there for another activity or field from this park? Don't know where that stands, but those kinds of simple little changes are probably mostly what's gonna happen in this park. Unless this next step that we do today tells us something new that we don't know. So that's Old Settlers. Veronica, we spent the most amount of time on last year, and half of, almost two years now, that. And so it's in pretty good shape from a plan standpoint and an update standpoint. And we still have to go, but we still have to go back into it and talk about, are the priorities still the same? Does the county still go for a grant in twenty twenty, in April? And what's the status they, they's gonna give you guys? I understand a little more detailed update, maybe the second part of the meeting, but we'll kind of brush on some of the things we have to consider. We're reflecting on the grant that went in and the plan that we have. So most of this is had, we don't have to mess around too much. We're gonna put a little bit more information, obviously more pictures, and then an enlarged map in here, um, into the inventory part. So, and David's provided a very nice set of information for the updated goals and objectives. Pretty detailed goals and objectives, which we vetted internally, and we, we put the draft of which in here from the, from the subcommittee work. Right after, like I mentioned, right after those three parks are the tabular, um, references to all the other facilities that are available on Leona County, at all levels of government. So there's a lot, we talked about that before, like, in the Mecca of recreation. So, it's pretty cool. Um, on page, right now, on page thirty-three and one, beautiful resources, still hard to inventory. These maps we had questions on, so at page, on page, you know, thirty-three, these are optional, um, in here, these physiographic maps, they're sort of land use land covered, they are getting a little dated. Obviously, your land form doesn't change, though. Even the land use land, well, soils don't change that much. I don't know if we have land use land covered in here or not, doesn't look like it. So, we wanted to know, do you find this useful to have in this plan, or is it trivial?
Seems trivial to me.
Because it's just more paper.
It's a picture.
It's, it's a picture, I mean, some people, I mean, it's kind of cool to see if ours gear, or a mom biker, I might look at that, or I might go, they all, I don't know, whatever. It might be, it might be useful to certain people and certain references.
Soils.
Soils doesn't really, it's for construction more than anything. So, yea or nay, out and in?
Maybe the top of, that might...
You can sub going, take the soils out?
And then you can pick up the whole legend page.
Basically, we would get rid of page thirty-one and thirty-two. I'm sorry, thirty-three and thirty-four. Is that okay with people? We didn't see a real pertinence to having that in there. Okay, but the topo, maybe? It's kind of, at least gives you one other, and actually, if we wanted to, we could move that further into, rather than after this, we could move it up to the other maps. And incorporate it, I think that's a better plan. So if it's alright, what we might do is move the topographic information, and then the following pages that talk about water resources and wildlife, we're gonna move that further to the front. In terms of after, say, these maps. Or somewhere in the context of these, these, uh, general maps of the county. Land use, we'll put it in this area somewhere. So we've got, we've got on page six, we've got land use land covered generally with roads, transportation. And we'll add it in, like, right in there. Add it right in after page eight. Does that seem okay to people, generally?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so we're gonna do that. So that'll clean it up a little bit, we'll focus on the three parks, and then the inventory list. Inventory map, as I said, will be right in front of that. And, then we're into section, a section that we don't have yet totally, but it's, we have to document the public process. So this is just me flagging where we think the activities are happening, are going to happen from a, from a public input standpoint. Um, a little bit of text regarding each, and then we'll, this is really draft. And then we end up with, like I said, parks and recreation making a recommendation for review, and then it goes to public hearing, there's probably there may be a couple, one, one meeting there. So, um, that's just a whole big place. And then... And then today's activity, which is to go through this a little bit more in more earnest and delete, add tracks, talk about screaming at each other, whatever we want to do. The last section and section five go together. This stuff will eventually, in our section, in our section in October, we'll be working on this. And this is kind of the who, what, where, when, why action program for the plan over five years. So for example, if I went and looked at the action, these steps for, and again, like I said, Miles Kimberly is first, Veronica Valley. See, we've got Veronica Valley, Old Settlers is first, we should probably read it just.
Yeah, well, I got it in here.
So we'll do Miles Kimberly, Old Settlers, Veronica Valley. But if I were looking at Veronica Valley on forty-one and then I go into some of the goals and objectives there, this is probably the most developed from the original work. The portion in red is just us editing this part we think we can delete as a part of the old plan. Section, the part on forty-two is three is the original goals and objectives of the Marco Plan Veronica Valley. And then beyond that is the newer stuff. So we kept them both in here for now, though we think there's redundancy between this list and this list. So we'll, we're going to work through that. But my point of why I brought you here is that we will take, you know, goal three, A, you know, whatever that is, well, let's do it for A, make application, mission National Resource Trust Fund. We're going to put it in here and we're going to fill out this chart. Basically, all those action programs are going to become a, you know, a chart form. So you can look at it quickly and go, okay, we're doing something with Veronica Valley in twenty twenty. When are we doing something with Old Settlers? Okay, we're, in Old Settlers in twenty twenty-three, we're going to do a plan. We're going to make a new plan for Old Settlers Park. So those are the things I want to decide and put on here. And it's your game plan, it's your, it's your roadmap as a committee or the next people that come onto this committee to work on. And hopefully it's used in that way, it's used to go, okay, yeah, that makes sense. We've done Veronica Valley, Dave, we just finished it in fourteen, or in twenty twenty-two, the wish came true and you got a grant and you built some stuff and you're done with it. Now, what is the committee doing beyond that? Did they, did they refocus on these other parks and start doing other things? Now, the tendency here is to put too much into the basket and try to do it all at the same time. And we're going to try to walk through this and make sure we don't do that. For, for obvious reasons, for your sanity. You can't, as a committee, work on too much at the same time, the county won't ever make it happen. And physically, you can't do all those changes or modifications or projects. So we have to, you might defer, you might actually say, we can't get all the stuff on these sublists into five years. But we'll find out, we'll find out today, of all that stays on, how, how are we going to do? You know, and/or do we just say, all right, we have to push these up and say somewhere between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-nine, some of those activities are out there to do, but they're not even on the radar yet. We're just kind of flagged for future considerations for sure. All right, so that's kind of, that sort of makes sense, how that all fits together. Is everyone ready to? Any questions? Are you ready to tackle one of these parks?
A comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure glad we decided to go this road and not to do it.
Because I'm making it so confusing, you're like, why would we want to do this ourselves? No, I'm trying to make it as clear, but you can tell there's a lot of pieces and parts here, so.
If I understand correctly, and this is to the six of us who are here, these, what we're going to fill out is what really the previous plan was lacking in large part. That is a guide to the actions of this group over the next five years. Whereas we're going to try to put it down here as a guide, a beginning, just to say, here's, oh. So we get a new commission member, we hand them a five-year recreation plan, say, read it, learn it. And this is our schedule of what we have planned in the past. So it helps guide us on into the future instead of essentially each year looking back, well, what are we going to do this year?
Yeah, so you kind of have a little bit longer range vision for what's happening. And hopefully that means you can anticipate things like when grants need to go in or when, when it would, when would it be appropriate to work on a plan for something ahead of, ahead of when you want to seek some assistance or partnerships or what have you. So.
If I understand correctly, that acceptance of this by the state was going to, they're going to look more closely at us having this kind of actual planning.
Yeah, and it's required to have this planning done. You had one, the plan you had previously probably was a little bit looser in terms of helping you find out what you wanted to do, which I experienced when I came here because I, one of the first things we start talking about was, what does your recreation plan say? Are you supporting Veronica Valley efforts in the recreation plan? And, and, you know, there was three different committees. It's different than it was when that plan was written. So now we have the three different committees, there are focused areas and there are objectives that have been whittled out a little bit for each of the places. And now we can organize how they can just possibly happen. How, from Elmwood Township work, you, you're still an Elmwood Township rec group, it's amazing. I mean, it was pretty cool because you could go through and look at that list that Fred Plamond and all those people, series of recreation commissioners worked on to get this organized enough to get stuff done. And if you look at Gallico now, I mean, it wasn't, it's not, not just a park. It was the marina and it was spilled over to the children's museum. And it was contagious, the different things that spurred from that plan.
Still don't have that bridge.
Still don't have that, but someone called me about it the other day, they're going to build that bridge.
It's hilarious how, the whole time I've been there, we've been talking about that bridge and it's never died.
It's a little twenty-foot bridge and it's like a bridge too far, right?
Yes.
But the good news is that, that if you went back and we did the updated rec plan cabinet work on it mostly for the township, and most of that stuff is gone off of that list and it's just done, it's been accomplished. So it's not for hundreds, probably hundreds of people of effort to get that back, but. All right, so it's good, I think it works, is what I'm trying to say. So we will do Miles Kimberly first, I put it on my mind in my page forty-one. We're going to move that to the front. Let's, let's start with that. And this again was, this is the goal, the goal would be two, right? That red is sort of, what are we trying to, what are we trying to do there? This talks about seasonality and et cetera. It's still kind of formulating more words that could happen, you know. But, but it is a active, active sports park for the most part. So the lists are pretty, pretty generic, holistic redesign of the park provided. It included all, I'm not sure what that means. But the point there being make a plan, and I think you just need to start with an action verb. You know, develop a plan, an updated plan. That's kind of all encompassing of the ideas that are generated while, you know, we're trying to say that. And then we just went down the list. On this park, and Dallas, I don't know. Well, maybe even some of the, if those are not necessarily in order.
They're not necessarily in order, we do have these smaller.
Okay, yeah, well, let's do that. You can just kind of, while he's doing this, you can kind of look through some of the things that came out of the walkthrough with Kyle. And Dallas, in this list, are all these, are all these from our walkthrough or are they combined with original ones?
These are all just the initial from our walkthrough.
But from the original plan, are there any left over or did we eliminate any?
We, I just, I left those out completely. Some were of a little relevance.
Good. I just want to make sure we don't miss, if we did miss one or something, it may have been want. But in general, I think we've sifted through what was in the generic stuff in the old plan and came up with this list. This is all, all newest and improved list. The item A really asks, answers the questions of where and what it, of where, what all these things are going to be and whether they stay on the plan or not. So as we're going through that, we did put a few little mini graphics onto this, related to this chart. So I think you can see on there, item B, the looped trail. When we went through this plan, pardon me, oh. When we went through this plan with Kyle, part of the input was that there was some concern about the trail looping around the driving range. So the trail, instead of going all the way to the property boundary on the, the direction I want to look in here, east side, it would actually stop at kind of a tree line. And I think the idea there was also, item five on that list was relocate. No, sorry, item eight was move the driving range to the east. So if you look on your map and see item eight on the table there, the suggestion was potentially move the driving range away. And that's to get the use conflict solved. So you don't have a walking trail where people are dodging, somebody, Kyle's driving this four hundred, four hundred yard drive up there clocking someone in the head. So that, that's what that's about. Refine wooded trail for all season use. So wooded trail is out, is out, out on the south part of the property, out here. And it's item sixteen.
Oh, that's the disc golf, it isn't numbered on the plan, but.
Okay, so let's do seventeen, right, on this list.
I was not necessarily correlating the two, but I do love to correlate.
Yeah, they need to correlate. So there's trail, I've never walked it beyond a golf trail. This is walked out there. Is it, is it, is a goal to refine it and make it better? Is it popular?
Yeah, I mean, it's fairly popular.
Okay. So when we say refine, what does that mean?
What does it mean, what's the need?
That's, I don't know what that means, I'm not, I'm not in Miles.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at.
But I think part of that is the grooming in the winter time. I think that's where it came in was, are there stumps now, places where they need to come out so we can vote for all season use?
So what's?
Well, that's two different things, isn't it? The, the, there's the, the trail that's there, but then I think what we were talking about is we had during this kind of clear perimeter trail.
Oh, okay.
And, and from what Scott was saying is we probably need them to, like, go, because they did it and they, there's, I think, I haven't like checked it out, but there's like still.
Shorter stumps from where they.
When you say perimeter trail, where is that? Is that accurate to show here or is that beyond further out?
That I don't know about, I thought that the stumps existed along the current trail, now that they've logged it, you know, they've pinned the stuff back. But I don't know any too bad, but that's the way I understood it, is that in spots, there's, where the trees were real close to the trail, they, you know, they're, all the saplings are cutting off as they're, so they can get around.
Okay.
And they left six, eight-inch stumps.
But that's groomed back there for cross-country?
We haven't yet, but that's the concept.
All right, so at the same time, what we will do, because we don't know either, is we're going to talk to Scott and we're going to take a look. And then we'll come back with a better refinement of that, that objective. And I have noted stump removal and ground, you know, and grooming for cross-country as a goal there. And whether that becomes a separate one or not, we'll fix item C there and move on from there. Okay. D, update baseball fields, eliminate, so we had discussions, and this is not decided, we had discussions about trying to improve what's currently there for ball. And it's hard to see exactly, but there are two, two ball fields, or there's one big ball field and then this little skinned infield closest to the drive, the west entrance drive, which doesn't look like it's being used much. And if there's any low hanging fruit to, to remove, it might be that one, if you needed more land for something. So that's kind of the level tile directly from putting words in there.
No, the, on the plan that we had done, it actually called for basically flipping the baseball fields, doing three, putting in a pony league field.
Right.
And that was one of the kind of the first things that we, one of the first cracks in the plan we started seeing is, do we need a pony league field? Is that being used and do we really need to flip the fields? And I think even Klaus pointed out, that's probably like, if we were rebuilding the park, that would be the way to do it. But for the, the way they're used and stuff is the question, do we, do we need three? Do we need a bigger one? Do we need to move them or could we maybe just rebuild these two right here and fit all the needs and save a lot of money and so.
Seems to be the case. I, I mean, I played on those fields when I was living, that one never got used or created at all.
So, and this is even more confusing. We, we won't put these ball fields on, I don't know, these must have been something else that we were playing with Dallas. I don't think that's part of our current thinking right now. These darker ball fields, ignore that for a moment, I didn't know that that popped on there. That, that won't probably be what happens. What I want to draw is what we think should happen in, in red here so we can fix it. So I think the corner field, we just said maybe could go away. And currently, there's a skinned, there's two skinned infields. Maybe that's what we were doing is drawing what was there, that kind of play right here. One and two, correct? Like this.
Yeah.
So that's what we were drawing, okay. So it was kind of existing conditions that we showed someone, like schematically put on there. So, but the outfield are bigger than we show. Or the, I think the lines out there are actually, the ball lines are actually more like two twenty-five to two fifty. So they'd probably be more about that size out there. And so the question is, what do you want to maintain and/or do you want to improve? So this one says upgrade baseball fields, eliminate number one. Is that true? Update, update these two and eliminate that one. For what we know right now.
Well, three of them aren't being maintained right now, so I mean.
Yeah, the two, two of them are played on and somewhat maintained. So.
But there's no softball league there in the summer like in Cedar, right?
T-ball, kids.
Just t-ball and little league.
Yeah.
And that's why we, I think initially, had the plan for a pony and said, why are we going to build a pony? Wouldn't know what he uses it. We got t-ball and little league, so let's.
So, so that's, let's just pause right there and say that's an option. We can get back to that. And we're not going to be able to plan, design the park here, but we're going to try to at least get the components and the wish list sort of in play here. So the fourth one is upgrade current and develop future restrooms. Current restroom, as you may know, is really hard to see, but it's right here. And it's a pit toilet, pair of pit toilets, and it's not ADA at all. So it doesn't meet any current standards.
And Klaus, you've got another baseball field in there?
Sorry, over here?
Yeah, is that just if we wanted a third or?
This is from your original, this is from the.
Original plan?
Dusty, dusty plan I call it.
Oh, okay, because here's the other one, okay, I guess.
Yeah, sorry, that's why I said, this is kind of confusing because it's got, it's got.
Yeah.
Big things. So we're trying to sizzle through that and that's why the first very objective here is someone's got to make a new plan for the park. And it's got to get a new life in terms of what this thing lays out being. And it's almost there, but I think this is okay. This is what I would call programming, we're trying to figure out what could be in the park before you tell a designer to go try to design something. But so, so yeah, ignore that ball field there. But, but that goal, but, but the point of that is, do you want that there anymore? And you're saying no. The pony league field does need to be there in this, in any plan in the future, correct?
Unless somebody comes in and says, my goodness, how come you're not building a pony league field?
You could, you could plan it there and right now there's parking lot there. And the driving range starts right there or right next to it. So if, you know, it could be shown as potential future and dash. So if, you know, it could be shown as potential future and dash in on a plan, so you leave space, but then you have to take care of what else to parking and you have to do some other things first, like move the driving range, so.
Back to bathrooms, sorry.
Back to bathrooms. So there, there is a.
What's the difference between pit toilets and compostable toilets? The biggest difference, pit toilets appears in part with compostable toilets.
You did? They are, cool. So my experience is only once with the compost, compost toilet and they're amazing, they don't smell at all if they're managed. But the pit toilets are a holding tank. And there's nothing that manages the smell or the hygiene, whatever you want to call it there. So the compostable toilet is a regular toilet that flushes into a system that has a bio, a biomass that absorbs and then they, I think the, it's like wood chips, refined wood chips, and they're actually, I think one of these, I actually pulled in that.
But they don't need to be heated, right?
Yeah, I'm not surprised you're doing that in public parks, that's, that's kind of, I mean, that's, I think, but.
That's a township.
Maybe there's a modern compostable toilet that I'm not, the ones I.
Well, we can figure out how to get rid of that smell, you know?
Yeah, and, and it's, the smell and then it's the ADA. So my assumption is that there, there's obviously no sanitary out here, no sanitary sewer on.
It's not sewer, oh.
There's nothing out here, but you could put, you could put, you know, a tile field if you wanted to do a plumbed restroom, but you obviously have water here. So that's an option, is to go to a, you know, a sanitary field, a drain field, and do a plumbed restroom right there. And that's for across the street. So, that's right, this is for these guys. Um, so, but the point being that probably a pretty high priority in our opinion is they're going to have potties on that site. And the other thing in this massive plan is a potty over here. And the size of the site and the use of this site, in our minds, would dictate probably two locations. You probably still want to have a potty located somewhere to service the core area, playgrounds, tennis courts, small children, stuff, family picnicking, and then probably another one that would service the ball field complex and the driving range and the rest of the bigger park in a personal. You gotta walk before you run one at a time, but that's probably what the plan should be.
Well, the existing restroom kind of services the soccer field and that whole end of the park, because it's kind of essentially located.
Right here.
Yeah. But there's nothing, there are portable toilets.
You can put portables down here, and that's the plan for future anyway, but I mean, I'm saying in this plant, the dusty plan, bless his heart, Dusty, my goodness, but Dusty, you know, they, they walked through some things and came up with, and she's right, there should be more facility down here, there obviously is, because replacing that, so there's a need. Whether or not the user base and the, the cost are warranted to go to that level is often determined in the future. But we would recommend a kind of a rebuild, what did we say, go to a, to a reconstruct. That one's on its last leg. It doesn't meet ADA and is probably never going to be a very good functioning room. The other building that I thought placement wise might work is the one that doesn't seem to have a floor or a foundation right across the road, and probably has liability right now. So as far as positioning, maybe, I don't know which is better, here or here, but that, somewhere in that core area, a restroom could happen.
Yeah.
So is everyone agreed that that upgrade current and developed future restroom facilities?
I think so, yeah.
As a goal?
Yeah.
Yes.
We don't know how yet, but that'd be a goal or an action. Okay, provide parking opportunities closer to the existing park uses. So, um, this plan showed a lot more parking up here. Just, it added parking here, and it added parking over here, which the, is sort of the shared use between the gravel parking lot and underneath it and somewhere, I think that sanitary field touched it right here. That, there's a gravel lot that people pull off to use the driving range and probably this ball field, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think we expanded that, or Scott expanded that because we're having issues with people parking on the road. And that was the answer, to try and get them some lost park.
Okay, that's correct. So, so that kind of helps there, the parking is to eliminate, the other part of that is to eliminate parking on the road. If possible. On the road, right? I think that's important, to come up with that. This plan also showed a, um, a pull group throughout the road that went through the park. Or goes through the park, so currently you can drive in, you go here, and this plan. Extended it and went there, so there's a loop road. Um, clearly, there's not, there's a need for parking down here, so the evolution of this parking, wherever it happens on this side of the plan or this side of the park relative to the uses, is part of, part of the plan. So I think the goal is right, the devil in the detail still has to be worked out. Um, I don't know that maybe, and I don't know Dallas, if further down we talk about the road at all, but I want to put in that item, E, what about the road?
We, we walked around, we, we talked, there was just three of us, we talked about it, and I think the, I guess the, the idea would be to keep it so we could build the road, but not necessarily.
So maybe show it as a future potential.
If we needed it, but I don't know, I think it was even your feeling, at this point, you didn't really know for the expense that that was wild.
I think that's what I said, yeah. So maybe show a future road extension to, a loop road in a park is not bad. Um, and, you know, it, it means that people can go to the destination they intend to go to, for one thing, usually. In other words, you know, if you're playing ball up here, you're instead of parking on the road here, you go directly to the parking lot you want, it serves it well, this one kind of serves a lot of the volleyball folks and soccer, and that might free up an ability for this road to really not, you might not need to develop as much parking, because you're kind of putting all your eggs in the basket right below, right in this area for parking. So, so that, I, I would say, does everyone agree maybe to show at least a future road potential? Through road potential, anyone disagree? Okay.
No, if you're going to show that the driving range is going to be moved over, so you can show it, potential.
Yeah, you know, it makes sense that you, you kind of get more use out of the park, and if that use moves over and there's more room to do some things here, then it makes sense that you could service it for the road or a drive and some parking. The other little option is you just pull in off another drive entrance and you don't connect.
It'd be seasonal.
Happen, right? One thing that hasn't been vetted, you know, is would the road commission have any objection to that? Don't know. I mean, they, they're pretty far apart right now and exist now, so I imagine it'd be grandfathered there.
I think they were happy with expanding that, because we can't, because we have a drive there for the parking lot.
Right.
And I think, because they wanted people not parking, or they supported.
They were.
People not parking on the road, they were happy about the parking lot. Which I don't think works back there, but.
Okay, so I'm going to, we, we might do a, a part of F there, or we might create a new one between F and G. Be F sub prime or whatever. But the other question in that category was this parking, and I don't know if you all know that it's whether it's necessary. And Kyle, what were you, what were you thinking, because this was quite a bit of development here to build that parking lot?
Let's just tell them, there it is.
No, I know, I'm just saying, is, is it, do you want to show it as a future potential expansion of parking?
The only time that gets used is during roundup.
For being used for other, like, park activities?
Yeah, that field only gets used for youth roundup, soccer roundup, that one, one Saturday a year.
Yeah.
That's the only time that that park is overflowing, is once a year.
So maybe this could be graded and shown as overflow parking and not gravel or even pavement necessarily, but mowed when that.
Levelled and grassed.
Yeah, just might be a little bit of, so maybe show an overflow parking that could be eventually, if necessary, developed into something more gravel or, you know, I don't think the intent is to pave anything more than the road here, because even this is all gravel, and I think the pavement stops. Okay, so maybe we'll show an overflow balance as part of that improvement on F. Be specific about that. All right, number G, item G. Uh, is there the field northeast, northwestern corner of the property for passive recreation? This field?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The hay field?
The hay field, what about the hay field?
I think this is yours and Dallas' thought.
Yeah, that's definitely a thought.
Is because it rolls from, now that we've got the horse farm, we've got four H, there's another horse farm over here that it just kind of flows very nice to keep it in a somewhat, I think your thought was a somewhat more, more natural.
Agrarian, kind of keep it farm-like and, and not, rather than necessarily, and this is where I got the thought, was, do you really want to throw eight tennis courts in, in the middle of this nice pastoral, you know, a bit? One, there's some activity happening with this farm and, and, you know, the pork farm and the garden. Hopefully, there's some research and some of the gifts back here. There was archery going on, I think someone was starting to introduce shooting back here. And then is the paddock used at all by any more horse?
A little bit.
So, you know, maybe you maintain the good, the main paddock here, and you still allow for other activities back in here. So this used space is still agrarian, and why necessarily introduce new athletic stuff, cars, parking and everything else if you don't need to here? That was our thought. It just is not, it just, it's a very nice looking corridor, the way it is, from a, from a contact standpoint.
We're only fitting eight courts.
But that's where the, and, and do the eight courts still exist as they need? Did that get vetted with the school? So they do want to come back.
I don't know if it's going to happen for sure, but there's still interest, yeah.
There's still interest, so we need to plan for tennis somewhere. Do we have that here yet?
Yeah, because I heard him say the other day. Because they thought, somehow it got communicated to them that there was no, the interest was lost when this park's wrecked in the county board to have tennis courts.
Oh, really?
There's a chat, he faced him and he said, I'm always surprised to hear that, so I was told that it was a dead deal.
One thing you were even saying, I guess maybe to bring it in to Klaus's point, is we had talked all the time about basically shoving them up in the front corner next to the road, is even if we stuck them, if it would, when we're planning, if we could stick them a little further back, instead of sticking them in this corner, sticking them in that corner.
Sure, yeah, whatever.
If, if we, if they did end up there, and I guess.
So there's, are you talking about this side?
Yeah, if, if we did do the courts, potentially, I guess it all, depending on engineering, but putting them more back towards that corner, so then the.
Right.
The, the view from the farm to the next horse farm is all.
Or you're still hoping.
If you were to eliminate that third ball field and put them along here. Put them in there, yeah.
Yeah, there, there, there is some opportunity, if, if these did stay and this went, that, and I think we suggested item thirteen on the map.
On the map, number thirteen is potential.
Proposed tennis courts.
Proposed tennis court location, that would be four of them.
That's only four though.
If you take out the.
The ball field, you could stick the other four.
You can stick more down there, you could do pickleball on the other side.
Or you could do four here and four there and not, and not the ball here, but somewhere else. So those are, those are planning things that happen in this design part, but the question would be, probably at this point, we can't determine whether tennis, item H on the list, would happen where.
Having that turnaround too, that might come with.
Say, location to be determined.
Wanting us to build a thing for their bus to come in.
Oh, yeah.
So we just say, yeah, already got it.
So I would only say that if we leave tennis on here, that we just add in there, location to be determined.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of implicit, same with pickleball, all, almost all these elements, we still have to get the final location. Is pickleball, did I skip one? Agri and tennis, no pickleball, I, so, is pickleball being requested here?
It's still a, still involved.
Okay, because I mean, if, if it hasn't been, it will be, I can tell you that.
Yeah, there's people that are.
Every community I work in now is on. Not that the people don't want to play tennis, but they want pickleball too. They'll kind of want gold, but pickleball is probably going to get dealt for hands sooner or later. Because we're all getting older, right, Tony? Yes, we are. Have you guys tried it yet, pickleball? You have, you like it? That's a lot of fun, isn't it? Dave's going to get you out there.
Yeah, I'd like to try it.
So, okay, so that's a kind of location to be determined, that's an easy one. Number J, item J, um, crosswalks, so what about that? Um, right now, nothing's happening that connects this to this. It doesn't necessarily have to. I remember when we first started talking about tennis, I didn't even know that this was part of the park.
I would, yeah, I wouldn't, in my mind, I wouldn't want a crosswalk.
Don't physically connect, and that's fine. It just, we just wanted to make sure that there wasn't, you know, is, is there any value recreationally that's worth the, quote unquote, risk?
If, if you put the tennis courts over there, that might be something to look at, but otherwise, you don't have any correlating activities road to road, it's two totally separate things right now.
True, you know, does the person that comes here to ride in the paddock want to go over to watch them on my baseball or something?
Yeah, I, I doubt it.
If they did, they give a car over there or whatever. I mean, point of a recreational park, it'd be nice if it was all connected. If you did connect it, our only suggestion would be make crosswalk happen, obviously, right here, and not do it anywhere else. So if it were to happen, we'd want to do it at a tee or something, where there's some ability to control. And you're right, if tennis happened, I would suggest that might be important to consider crossing there, but otherwise, maybe not. So what we could put in that line is, you know, dependent on other lane uses or something, and probably target it at a specific place. We can put that on our, what we'll do is we'll kind of make a schematic a little bit from this and sort of try to lay a little bit into the next step of planning. So I'm on, item J, I'm just putting any other land we assist to other areas. Uh, item A, define central location for kiosk on site and relocate informational sign to that location. Kiosk is, right now, there's.
Beautiful in the car.
The information is, you're way up in the front of the park and it's a drive-by. It's not really for people out of car seat. So we're wondering if that can be better, because we should have a picture of it.
Yeah.
So it's a sign that's meant to be read for a person.
Correct.
Right?
And it's oriented to be viewed at a car.
From a car, next to the road, as soon as you turn into the park, so it's not placed. No offense to anybody, it's just not placed right. So all you need to do is maybe relocate it, and the optimal place to relocate those kinds of things is where people unload from the car and are moving to places. So we were just, we were just trying to figure out where that is. And I think there's, there's a little bit of something going on in here, all moving in the plans. Um, and we even had a crossing, because if people are, are picnicking and they want to go over and watch soccer, it'd be nice to have a formal place, people are, that name, we expect to see people crossing and try to avoid people crossing everywhere, even on this part of the entry road. And I think people tend to park along here, which is sort of informal right now. So, there's some design stuff that has, happens in here, so that's all we were suggesting on that item. Upgrade play equipment. Uh, mostly play equipment's down in this corner, and it's just, if, if you're going to upgrade the park over time, eventually, right now, some of the equipment does not meet any current standards, computer, consumer product safety standards, and none of it is appropriately, um, addressing fall heights or materials under the play equipment. And some of it's just worn out and old, in terms of, like, the merry-go-round, there's like a trough. Which, there's some real liability in that item, and I would suggest that at some point in the future, the upgrade of that is put into a program replacement, replacement and to look at servicing, safety, and placement.
One thing I was surprised, it was, we went to the Glen Arbor Park.
Mm-hmm.
You guys worked on that?
Mm-hmm.
In the playground equipment, there's a rope climbing thing?
Yeah.
In that?
Yeah.
I'm surprised that that's not a safety issue.
I know. I know.
You can get up there ways.
You can get up there, you're probably what, you climb on the top, it's probably twenty feet?
It's, it's eighteen feet tall. There's one out in Arizona that's fifty feet tall. Basically, what happens is when you're up there, you can't fall more than six feet without something breaking your fall. And that's what causes the safety.
Which doesn't mean you're not gonna knock your teeth off.
Doesn't mean, yeah, you're not gonna get hurt.
Something else, but it needs, it needs, it needs consumer product safety standards from the industry. And there's, if, if you climbed it, you could, you feel pretty, I mean, it's stout.
It is stout. I climbed at the top of it. My son fell about six feet off.
He did?
Yeah. But he's only five years old.
He wanted to climb, he's five years old, he's got a, got a kid.
Yeah. He was up there a little bit and once, he went straight down the land on his feet, it wasn't a big deal, but. I was just, I was surprised that that was.
Yeah. It needs it, um, and the, the, as importantly as where they land on, once they do get to the bottom, and that has a fourteen inches of engineered wood fiber, it's saying mulch. It's actually a specialized stuff that is put in, blown in in layers. So it has, they all have ratings and your fall heights are based on how much thickness you put underneath that stuff, underneath those. So that's what I'm talking about, is that you can, the higher you go, the more you have to deal with that, but. Yeah, so those are some points for that. Update, develop park master plan. We already had that done up top, so that's fine. We're just, M and A are the same. And update, develop park operation and maintenance plan. Where Scott and Rita? He's hurt?
Yeah, he got hurt a couple weeks ago.
Was that probably on that job, or did?
No, I traced that along, I was working on my last plan.
Oh really?
Um.
You didn't know that?
No.
I'll give them a.
I didn't know it was from that. Puzzles tractor. Puzzles tractor.
So, this one, I guess, is more of a question than, I mean, it's, it's a goal, it's an action stuff, but where do you stand as a committee? Have you guys been working on sidebars on O and M stuff at all?
Yes.
Yeah, so is there for each park, there's a series of things that?
Yeah, we've, I mean, in the past, we've come up with a list and had basically a checklist. I mean, it's all, I mean, Scott knows about all of it, whatever he can get to in years' time.
And, and of course, he, you know, I don't want to make, the point is, it's for Scott, it's not against that. It's for Scott's benefit or his, his successor, or hopefully someone that's helping him. Cause sooner or later, one guy is not gonna be able to handle.
We'll address some of that with some help for him throughout the summer with grass cutting. So to free him up for some other projects.
So, we, we, we think that taking those and maybe formalizing them a little bit more would help this, this committee be able to argue at the board level for resources. Cause if you don't have a good plan, you're never gonna get the resources if you don't show the cost, the cost and need of the stuff. I don't know how much that's done, cause Scott probably can't advocate for himself and in those meetings, he's gotta ask you guys to go there to the board and ask for budgets and establish budgets. And I don't know how much of that happens. But in each one, just so you know, in each one of these parks, we put that there. Now, we should give them a better definition of what that is. But it's, you know, it's a level of effort of going through what you know, what you don't know, what your current facilities are, what they want to be, and actually putting together, we did this for Veronica Valley Day. You know, when we did the Veronica Valley Grant, we have to put a maintenance plan into the grant. And so that's actually the framework that we would like to see, because each park has, and it, and it also has to do with depreciation of equipment and, and replacement of stuff. It shouldn't just be about hours of maintenance to mow and do the, the grooming and do whatever. For example, we were just talking about it this morning. Veronica Valley has a weed removal program under the radar happening right now in ponds. That the county doesn't really have much to do with, right? And that weed removal program in ponds is essential for the kids fishing program. But it's, like I said, it's not on anybody's budget, either from a time, materials or anything standpoint. And that, to me, is kind of where it could be, probably should be, so that it gets done in a way that is, you know, on the album. And not having it be some guy volunteering that if, once he goes away, then the pond is screwed. Literally. Right? If he, if he were gone, if Scott weren't able to come back, that list doesn't mean much to anybody. So that's all I'm saying is that, 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 I think is a pretty big goal of any parks and recreation committee. And it's probably one of the hardest ones, because it's the hardest one to, to spend money on in terms of, man, we gotta, what if we have to replace this, or what if we have to, you know, over time, we have to do more work on it? So, alright, so that's Miles Kimberly. Does anyone agree to not develop a more substantive operation and maintenance plan? As part of the goal? For Miles Kimberly. Now that made a big. Fire and brimstone stump speech.
Well, Miles Kimberly has the most maintenance.
It does, does it? There's a lot, and I was like.
It's too much going on.
There's a lot going on out there. So I don't know, you know, anyway.
Too much going on type?
For County Park.
For County Park that one guy maintains?
Does the county maintain?
The county even has. I know, it's a lot, it's a lot.
It is.
Parking parks is a big deal.
We in Solon Township have three ball fields, we use two. The other one needs to go away. We have three here, potentially four, with another one planned, and one gets used.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
It's a good point. I mean, are you, you know, is, is the plan, you know, scaled back?
There is two that get used, these two over here, but I don't think any more now.
Well, yeah, but they get used, those two over here, and then they bitch about people parking in the road because they're so lazy that they won't pull in to here and walk over to it. So now we gotta put a loop in, so they have a place to park. Delete those, put your eight tennis courts right there, and build a ball field down here somewhere. A nice ball field, one nice ball field. You don't need three junk ball fields, you need one nice one.
I disagree.
So that's cool, cause that, that's exactly what, in a park planning exercise, you probably go through and measure those different options on paper and, and figure it out. But I think your, the point there is, you know, and as soon as you do it, and I want to ask a question about soccer fields, that definitely brought that up. Soccer fields are amazing. Soccer field turf is maintained by North Storm, as far as I know?
Yes.
So, therein lies an example of, you don't have that level of oversight, time available or money being put into the ball fields. You know, if you go and look at the outfield, the ball fields on this park, I mean, they're pale in comparison to anything near what the grass is around the soccer field. So it's what you want it to be, in that planning, future park planning session, I don't, I'm not gonna disagree a bit. I would agree that maybe more of it needs to be, less is more out there unless you have the demand and you have the resources to put at that demand.
Well, and that's, we've tried and only got so much interest from the Little League, but that's the Elmwood. We've got two, but we've got one that's amazing, because the Little League came and basically said, look, we want a better field.
Yeah.
Just give it to us.
Right.
And we, we do every year a one dollar lease with them, and it's basically their field. But they take, I mean, we cut the grass, if they want to fertilize it, they fertilize it. If they want to, you know, aerate it and rake it, I mean, they, they do all that stuff.
Well, and start building, building a new ball field. I mean, not anywhere within this parks and recreation project.
Right.
Is the problem. I mean, that, some of these, a lot of this would be great to do, revamp it, but.
That's the other reality, how much could you really get this board to agree with in the next ten years to put up here? How much can we take?
Well, that's what I say. We, we already maintained too much. If we're outside the commissioner, and you were a commissioner, so you know how much goes into these things. Zero.
So I've heard two things.
Compared to what should.
I, what, what you brought up, both of you brought up, is that there are, all of us brought up, is there's third party out there that have to come to the table for it to occur. And it happened, it happens in Traverse City, and Traverse City doesn't even, they don't even, I mean, T-bays is all on their own. Ice, center ice is all on their own. And all those higher end stuff that pretty much are funded by the groups that want them and maintained by them over time. So I think I'm gonna add to the update of the park operation and maintenance plan, probably just some discussions with stakeholders like North Storm and Little League again, and whoever else. And until and if they don't come to the table with a plan that helps the county do what you're saying, maintaining a facility that's both used and taken care of beyond one guy, then the plan should be simply as simple. It can't be the dusty dream plan, because there's no way you can afford it or maintain it.
Yeah, and we, that's a, not North Storm, but just like another guy who runs a soccer league. He, we just signed an agreement with him for our non-compliant, basically just open field, soccer field. Because he wanted the grass better taken care of.
Okay.
Chuck still cuts it, but they fertilize it, we have a sprinkler system, I think they paid for us to fix.
That's it, you mean at Elmwood?
Yeah, so I mean, it's not, if we can get the Little League here and tell them, hey, we'll do this, I think it's becoming pretty common.
It is. It has to be partnership.
If you want a nice field.
Yeah.
Here you go, make it nice.
Yeah, correct.
Thirty minute warning.
Good, great. So Miles Kimberly is good. Let's talk about old settlers. We'll update this, we did it back up to you on, on the sharepoint of this section. So, gotta go back a page, or forward a page, sorry, that's the one that's just listed. And Dallas did some work from our left through Casey on this plan, hang that up for a second. This one's a lot easier, hopefully, to deal with. And in sense, in a simple sense, Casey, the, the part that is easier to maintain, because it's left in a little bit more, it's called rustic. So, one of the questions that came up before was, what about irrigation? You know, as soon as you think about adding irrigation, then you, you automatically raise the expectation about turf management. So there's fertilization, and there's more mowing, and there's more consideration. So, that, you know, I thought, when we were out for Casey, we talked about that, and it was the one that we wanted to pursue. But if you did, just, just on the coattails that we just talked about, and there's one that, that changes things out there, maybe in a direction that you might not.
Right, and that's my standpoint, but there has been some interest from other members of this committee.
Yeah.
It was also talked about by some of the neighbors donating the money or getting people to donate the money for it, but it's about thirty grand.
A lot of trees and trees to deal with.
Correct. And. So it was never my, and my intentions to ever do it out of our own budget. Is that, I mean, you've got thirty grand upfront, then you had mowing costs and all that go up.
Yeah.
And it doesn't look bad as it is, it's, I mean, it.
It's shaded, so it's not like it's.
Yeah, and it's a lot more open now that we have the storm and all the trees fall over, but.
So, okay, so if we go, oh, there, create a place where people can immerse themselves and enjoy the quiet, the quiet past, that old settlers picked the grounds. Gaining an understanding of the place, history, universal accessible, and the surrounding. Salads and bananas, commonest natural beauty. So, we had the universal accessible over there?
We did.
We did, yeah. So, the history part, the on-the-lake part, the little bit more rustic picnic grounds, it's not an active recreation park. It's a different place than we're dealing with in, than Miles Kimberly. It's a great resource. It's time to try and honor it, and there's a fair amount of activity. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, one thing I kind of noticed leafing through this.
Yep.
I don't think I noticed anywhere where the monkey flower was mentioned.
The what?
Monkey flower.
I don't know if we ever.
It is, it's protected.
In old settlers?
And it's, it's unique to the state.
Cool, that's a great plan.
We have viewing platform.
Yeah, you have the overlook in here. Overlook with suit. But the monkey flower is right below that overlook. Uh, go the other way.
Yes, sir. Go over here. Okay, let's go on.
That overlook, you have the overlook in the, in there.
Yep.
And that, the monkey flower is right below it, and that, that overlook is built to look at the flower.
Cool.
So not only adding it to that segment, but on page thirteen with the overview on the unique characteristics for the county.
Okay.
You mentioned the piping plover, you might want to stress the monkey flower as well.
Thanks, Laurel.
I think that's actually even more rare than the piping plovers, isn't it?
Yeah.
There's only, there's like very few places where it grows.
Yeah, like two.
So, we'll add that in there. Uh, I was gonna suggest first that we move item I up to the first one, and then come to something below it. So update the park master plan and develop projections for improvement. So, however this plan gets updated, I'm not sure, but we'll come up with the best we can schematic that shows the possibilities and general locations of the list we completely put together there. So when we walked through, we noticed some things that were mostly related to sign, um, a little bit of functionality for signage and parking and directional, you know, motion. Safety, there were a few things related to where things were placed, and, and then some aging stuff, like, like, I would say, yes, some challenges and some things that you've already identified. Other than that, you know, we had mentioned, so that's kind of covered in A. The, um, universal accessibility, we felt like maybe there was an opportunity to do a little bit better job of getting some accessibility to happen in this area. You're not gonna get into the chapel with the stairs there, and I'm not suggesting we build a ramp, but there are some things that are missing from an accessibility standpoint from here and perhaps to get at some places where there's accessible picnic table and grills in the same area with surfacing along, so that you could not, the grass isn't considered accessible, so we would want to create a few spots where you could get to, say, a picnic table and grill in a few parts of the park that are close enough to parking and usable for that purpose. The toilets, there's a couple things to update there. On item D, the shoreline, um, what, tell, talk about the shoreline. Uh, we don't get a whole lot of understanding of what, I mean, we saw a lot of people on dock.
It's popular for swimming, swimmers, it is.
It's popular for swimming off of the dock.
Off the dock.
The shoreline is just.
You can't, you can't access it really from here, you can hang out here.
Right.
Um, well, pretty much more this way.
Yes.
This is all vegetated, I think.
And it's been, it's been the exact same way as long as I've been alive.
Okay.
It's never, there's never been any improvements down there. The shoreline has stayed the exact same.
Yeah.
There's some, I mean, there is some small, a small amount of erosion underneath there, but it's been there forever like that.
What about, this is determinist of where people can go, right? Well, maybe there's one spot on the other side of that ramp.
There's not much area there.
Yeah, not much, but there's kind of really, some really nice hangout spots along there.
Yes.
Like, and they just need a little bit of upgrade, some of the benches are.
Yeah, they're getting a little.
Getting old and broken and stuff, but it's also kind of wet there. Like, when you walk down in here.
Yes, seeped.
Seeped, there must be a lot of water coming off.
Well, that's why the monkey flowers there, cause there's like creeks that comes on.
It's got a lot of seeps, so I don't know that there's much to change, it is what it is.
That's kind of the way, I think that's why it's been that way forever, is because there's not a whole lot of options.
You know, if it's a little drier, you go down there, it's too wet, it's just rain or whatever, you don't go down there that much and hang out. So, I don't know, shoreline enhancement, is there really a shoreline enhancement? Take it off?
Yeah.
Okay. The time, space is unique to the park. What do you mean, Dallas?
It's like you're talking to a human and saying.
Do we have some for the finance?
I think some spaces in the park are like that, right?
That.
Well, the monkey flower, we want.
Monkey flowers.
More. I was thinking the overlook, just the ability to get out and where else can you go to look over, like, at that? And publicly.
There is one.
Exactly.
So, um, this plan shows a trail that goes into there.
Those potential trails.
Yeah.
It was, it existed at one time, but it's all overgrown.
You don't want to really maintain some deck in there, probably not. Upgrade playground equipment, we can make some more specific suggestions for that there. Uh, consider kayak canoe launch development on H. You had some people that came in for rowing. Is there really, is there a need or a potential for that to happen in this park?
The paddling or people kayaking?
Anybody launching in any way from the shoreline in the park, like from here.
I mean, you could maybe redo that drive, but other than that, I wouldn't, for that little small road that goes down there, but I don't foresee.
Does it end up on a rocky edge though, doesn't it?
Well, you would let it already drive down.
Yeah, no, you wouldn't want to let people drive down there, they'd have to walk whatever they're taking down there.
And it's been a long time since I've been at the end of that, but I know some of my family has recently launched kayaks from there.
From there?
Yeah.
Is there any other place nearby other than the marina that you could?
Um, Funes, which is where Funestrada is, if you head north at Funestrada, there's a mode end that's, it's public, and that's where I grew up swimming, but there's no amenities there.
Is it close enough to this that, is that easily, more easily put in there with a kayak or other boats than here?
Yeah, it's all flat, you won't have.
How far is it from here?
Three quarters of a mile.
So I don't know that with that available, if this was the only place you could do that, I don't know that I would force it, I would, you know, we try here, but since it's not, it might just be better to, I mean.
If they want to drag their kayak, they can drag their kayak down their boat.
If they really want to, they got a kayak on their car, and they want to go down, they're not preventing them, we got it encouraged.
And people do, yeah, it is used for that.
Okay, well, we won't put that in there, what about the rowing, did you, did you guys go anywhere with that, did they come back?
I haven't heard back from them, Laurel hasn't either, they, I told them to come back at this meeting with a more of a point, and there's some ideas as to what, whatever they actually need.
We just don't need to formally put that into this, right?
Well, we wouldn't, they want to, did they want to build it?
No.
They kind of wanted to use a grub shack, but that's not going, probably not going to happen, and they were talking about building a rack, just like an outdoor storage rack.
Park one of their trailers, they have those big trailers, no permanent structures.
What, what else do we know or not know about, I mean, that's pretty basic, there's some pretty basic stuff here, not real complicated, does anyone see anything glaringly missing from this list?
The monkey flower was the biggest one, I'm about to go over that.
Oh, I forgot, three on the next page, provide regular repairs to the pavilion, so yeah, that's one thing we did notice, the chapel looks fantastic, the pavilion and gazebo is kind of in between, and then the grub shack is probably the worst, but there's a plan to upgrade the grub shack, and now, is there a plan to upgrade that for the pavilion?
Yeah, my cousin's going to paint that next summer.
Yeah, we was talking about the same.
Cousin, I got it, Casey's cousin is painting it this summer.
It'll be done.
Okay, so that's, that's, okay, eliminate adjacent activity and conflicts in the park.
My, my, the guy that's doing this, his wife said that she would power wash and paint that next summer.
Oh, the gazebo, okay.
Yeah, so it's on my project.
Okay.
And then the last one, like I mentioned, we're going to put one out in each one of these, is there a general list that Scott has for the maintenance of this park?
I love them, yeah.
And so, and there's vendors that mow, does he mow?
Well, yeah, he does, or.
Or get some help in the worst of the summer.
We couldn't get vendors to mow any of the parks.
You can't find good help, right?
Well, we went, we went off the grid, so nobody bid up.
So that means you can't find people to mow.
That's amazing.
But we did have, for most of the summer, part-time help, but we don't know what we're going to do next summer.
Ty, maybe Ty can go, or you or Hallard could give them a day that.
Yeah.
Where do they meet?
We got a plan.
Got a plan?
Yeah.
Excellent.
So, what about the potties in these restrooms, who takes care of those?
Well, they're kind of self-maintained, because they're pit toilets until we need them pumped. And then we do bring in porta potties for the old settlers picnic.
Okay, so, the potties, yeah.
And Scott, Scott maintains them.
He, like if someone goes in there.
He makes sure that they're, you know.
Now or whatever you could do, there's not a lot you can do in them, but.
No, but he, you know, he makes sure that there's not trash all over in there, and he, I just had, something spilled something in one of them recently that stayed in the floors, so.
Yeah, gotcha. So, all right, well, we could, you know, like I said, maybe taking a peek at that with Scott, and we can help formalize it, or, you know, that could be a goal, to do a little bit more. All right, so how much time, fifteen minutes, Laurel?
That's right.
Okay, so we have fifteen minutes to talk about Veronica Valley, which fortunately we've done the most amount of work on, and if you flip to page next forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four, the list got a little bit more detailed from Dave's efforts on forty-three and forty, forty-three and forty-four, but the original list is, um, a little more.
They came out of our site visit.
Came out of our site, Dallas and I's site visit, when we met with he and Hope, David Hope, Mr. Hope, so... The first one's probably the biggest one, and probably, like I said, in your action program, one of the first things that would occur is their general direction that this is going to get a reapplication in April, um, for the program there, and the biggest caveat to that for success would be to get a few more points out of collaboration, which we've been making a lot of effort to figure out, and we're still not there yet, but the reapplication's pretty easy either way, and you still have all the way till next October to get the collaboration piece figured out. The tribal thing kind of busted up and didn't really work out, but we're not totally done with communicating that. The little bit of work with the pond maintenance folks from the Lake Association has some legs, but it's not going to be probably the silver bullet, and then I suggested to Dave that maybe we talk with Bingham Township a little bit, and make some effort to see if they have some, I mean, a lot of the people that probably use that park up on their township, I mean, locals, close by, well, that'll just throw us out, because Bingham's got that huge, I don't know, a hundred and eighty acres, that, we're not directly, well, we might even be directly connected to if you look at it, what's that?
Herman Park?
Yeah, I mean, it's mainly all swamp.
That's Bingham Township.
No.
Herman Park?
Not Herman, no, no, because there's, across the road, the conservancy bought that forty, that forty runs into, like Bingham Township's biggest part, it's like nothing, it's just like, I went back there just to go walk around, and most of it you can't walk on, but it runs, we're connected to, I have to show, but.
Veronica Valley.
Veronica Valley, maybe through that, that conservancy forty, is connected into this huge chunk of mainly swamp land that Bingham bought with the conservancy quite a few years ago, I think mainly to, it's like a watershed preservation, I mean, it's a park, it's listed on their parks thing, they've got no trails in it, they've got nothing, but it's a, it all connects together. Yeah. Between, from us to the conservancy on that forty that was for sale forever across the road, I'm pretty sure runs right into that, that property Bingham's got, um, pretty sure they're all contiguous, I guess you have to look at the plan, they have to be like, for sure, for sure.
For sure.
But it's, it's a, they got a big chunk of, unfortunately, no, I guess fortunately, depending on how you look at it, mainly swamp land. Yeah. Because it, across the road, it turns basically all, starts turning into all mainly swamp land, but they've got a big chunk around the lake, so I mean, that would be, I don't know what we would, how we'd collaborate, but we're all kind of joint property owners. Right. Right there. Well, that's, that's a point, we, I didn't know that, you did.
No, I didn't.
We should check that out, we can check that out.
I'm actually sitting down with Mitch tomorrow.
Oh, you made a call already?
Yeah.
We, I had reason to hook up with Mitch Warner, the township supervisor, for something else, and, uh, working with them on something, and, and I just told David, you know, it was just, why not, ask Bingham, you know, they have a little skin in the game here, they've got a lot of residents that probably have interest in Veronica Valley, and, you know, it's not unprecedented to have, I mean, that's probably the best part of another government out there, cooperating with, with the county to be unique.
I'll go through some of that in our, in my Veronica meeting, uh, report in the regular meeting, so we can move on with this other part here.
Okay, great, so do we think we're going for the grant, yes, I guess, right?
I'm presuming we will, we've made this much effort, why waste it and not finish it out?
Um, all these other little subsets are probably expanded, went in more detail with Dave's program four, five, and six there, to a degree, um, I think that's true.
I have a question.
Yes.
Since we were going to, obviously go for the grant again, and this is our five-year plan?
Mm-hmm.
It's good, starting next year?
Mm-hmm.
What is, why does it need to be A, when I look at this in twenty twenty-five?
Oh, um, I see, because it's really not, it's not an issue, we're doing it, it's a good point, it doesn't have to be in this list.
I'm just, I've.
Because we're starting, we're starting with next year, I mean, technically, next April is still part of the plan.
Yeah.
That's why, because this, this coming April is when we apply, so it's technically.
Well, that, that's fine, but when I look at this in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, well, you'll check it off, so you'll go, you got the grant. Hopefully, you'll look at it sooner than twenty twenty-five. Dave, you, sorry, do you have any comments on, this is more what you generated than us, do you have anything specific you want to highlight to jump to the chase on this list, or should we just leave it, read it and kind of try to absorb what, what you got there? I'm trying to kind of decide whether this first list is really relevant if you have this list.
You got a whole lot of lists going on for Veronica.
Yeah, I think we can.
Second list is much more detailed and has some more information with it.
Yeah, which are you referring to as first and second list?
Well, this first, this first list under three is what Dallas and I generated, this, this list on page forty-three and forty-four are what we got from you.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, I like it, because it really gets into the leads no unintended, it's detailed, it's just, I'm trying to figure out what we need here, what's the best, just somewhat viable, and, um, maybe it's just getting rid of our first list, and maybe focusing on these other pieces that we've got. I, I think it's, I think it's exactly what it is, because you read the bullets below, they're very specific to what we've already been talking about, they just went into our , our, which is what I asked, the kind of answer to that question.
But we don't need the plan to make the application be part of the five-year plan, because we're just going to do it here.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be the very first item on your list, just because it happens in the first year of your five-year plan, but, and we can't do, because that's part of, part of the regular list.
Yeah, yeah, it's listed, what you're doing. They're going to want to see that when they.
So I think.
Easily finding in the plan when they see the grant, I think.
Well, it's right here, camp, under five A.
Yeah, so what, what.
It has not been condensed.
What we'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll take.
And, actually, four A.
Yeah. We'll take, um, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and see if we can't mean it together a little bit, and, and condensate it, so we don't see the same sort of detail there.
It says it connects.
And that's, that's it, so, what, what we can't, what we can do, and I don't even want to take the last ten minutes to do this, is we will go through the B's list, clean them up, reissue, but at the same time, we will draft out what we think the sequence might be in this list on the action program, and put that up, and then for October, that'll be our, that'll be our work session to work on that, and then you'll be like ninety, you'll be ninety percent through this.
Are we meeting at one again?
Can we meet at one again?
I'm working.
Okay, is that okay, Laurel, we have to post it as an updated meeting?
No, you're here this time, I won't lose track and call you the day before.
So, this is for prior to the October meeting?
This is, this is the October meeting, we were hoping we could have the time be one o'clock again.
Okay.
Is that it for now, Laurel?
Yeah, I think so, Dallas, you won't, what do you want to ask?
Or maybe you guys, like in your sub, maybe not sub, maybe just your thoughts, go through and start prioritizing where you see things happening, okay, for our next meeting, and then.
Yeah, you can do that, you can do that exercise too, although they want to have cleaned-up list, we could get a cleaned-up list, you know, for that, so, you know, I'll do that through, but it must be organized.
Or if they consider it.
Okay.
And you're going to stay for the next meeting as well?
If I, if you like us to.
Or do you, do you want, do you have other things that you want us to do or go over?
Not for this.
All right, that's fine.
We're all set.
Cuts half the agenda out here.
Here you go, good swipe off the list.
Not everybody else, so.
Let me be clear on this last point, then, Dallas, you might be, or you will be getting out some cleaned-up lists, so that we can put some priority into.
I left the list blank there, just in case we got to it today, that we could start prioritizing where things might go, and what year, according to the, the golden objectives, maybe it's something just on your own, you can take notes on and have ready for the next meeting.
But the only thing we want to do prior to that would be to reorient.
Yeah.
What Dave's asking is, will we get down to updated, uh, action goals objective section before you would do that, so yeah, I think within the next couple weeks, we'll have that, and put it up on the, on the SharePoint.
That will be important for me, because I won't be here on the sixteenth.
Okay, yeah, so why, why don't you expect to see that, you know, within, it might not be a few weeks, it might be sooner, and I'll jump on it right away here, and get it reorient, re, uh, re-edited, so that you can use it, and then you have basically a month, and you can think about what you might want to plug in where, and we'll do that exercise ourselves, and then we'll meld our thoughts, and come back in October.
Okay.
Because we barely got this one, like, one on.
If we can't meet, we can't meet, but we'll have it.
I liked what Laurel did, where's the.
Yes, the list, yeah.
So that's us.